At this time, we will welcome everyone to this meeting. We'll follow the reading to order, and we will start with a prayer, and then the Pledge of Allegiance. If we can higher our heads. Dear Lord, we thank you for this day. May we give thanks for our country, our county, and our village, but for the many blessings that we have received, may I just understand the true meaning of Thanksgiving. We pray for our servicemen and women, both past and present, who sacrificed so much to keep our country safe. Also, Lord, we pray for the sick and the injured, that they may be healed, and for those who've lost loved ones. In Jesus' name we pray, Lord. Amen. The Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance is the pride of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
President.
Here.
Governor.
Here.
Here.
Hart.
Here.
Thecraskey.
Here.
Give me the passenger down. It's just a little bit.
Okay, a special meeting was called to discuss, number one, restructuring EMS program, the man you sue legislation to lower the base rate for commercial, and discuss downtown parking, and to purchase property on Antwerp Drive. I think maybe what we'll do here, because I can see that the discussion on downtown parking could be a little lengthy, we'll start with the last item, purchase property on Antwerp Drive. Does that sound okay to everybody? Do you have legislation in your package?
It'll be a second reading, a resolution 2015-24 by caption only, a resolution of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio authorizing the mayor to purchase real estate necessary for sewer drainage improvements and declaring an emergency.
I'm going to suspend the rules.
I'll second that.
We have a motion to suspend the rules on resolution 2015-24, and a second by Ron Jones. Motion may I make, Mr. Craskey? Roll call, please.
Thecraskey?
Yes.
Bart?
Yes.
Haver?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Yes.
Third reading of resolution 2015-24 by caption only, a resolution of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio authorizing the mayor to purchase real estate necessary for sewer drainage improvements and declaring an emergency.
So move.
Well, Barry makes a motion on resolution 2015-24. Mike Bart did. Sorry. Second? Second, Mick Thecraskey. Roll call, please.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bart?
Yes.
Haver?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Thecraskey?
Yes.
Troy, do you want to continue with your legislation?
Yeah. Ordinance 2015-17 was also a second reading by caption only, an ordinance restructuring the pay for full-time employees of the EMS department and declaring an emergency.
Do we have discussion here?
Somebody wants to suspend the rules unless... Ah, well, that's set to be effective November 25th, which is the next, beginning of the next pay period if it's passed as an emergency. If not...
If not, it stays right like this?
If not, it will go to the third reading of their next meeting.
Is that fine with everybody?
I'm lost, so it's not...
I mean, for discussion purposes, we took the salary that both of those people are paid and broke it down into an hourly rate for the purposes of the situation where they're on call, and they get called out, and it basically takes them into time that's over their 40 hours a week. They should be getting overtime under the overtime rules of the Fair Labor Pay Act. And so, in order to make that easier for payroll purposes, instead of keeping them at their salary rate, we just took their current salaries and reduced it down to an hourly rate, and then that's what they'll be paid. So their base pay will be the same, they'll still get the dollar an hour on call time, but then when they make runs outside of their normal work hours, so when they're on call, when they make runs, whatever time spent on that run, if that takes them over 40 hours in a given week, they'll be, you know, just like if one of Kent's guys is out on a sewer dig or something and goes over, they'll be entitled to overtime and...
What difference is it than doing it this way or doing it the previous way if it still comes down to paying you time and a half, or time and a half, or...
It's just a matter of how you calculate it, and so how you can show it going forward. I mean, I guess theoretically, we could have said, uh, we could have said to Diane, "Hey, you gotta keep track of their hours and anything over 40 hours, they're entitled to time and a half, and here's what their hourly rate is." And I've mentioned it a ton of times, that's how my wife's pay, she's salary, but when she works overtime, she gets paid overtime, and that's how they do it. Um, you know, so from that advantage, there's no...
It's the same.
No, it's not the same, because if they don't work for, if they don't work a set number of hours in a week, their pay won't be the same. So actually, if they work 35 hours in a week, their pay will be different, assuming they don't have some kind of vacation pay or sick pay that they're entitled to. So it's not quite the same, but it's close.
So right now, they're on salary, but they work...
They both are on salary.
Or strictly...
No. That's what I'm saying is, just because they're on salary does not mean they're exempt from overtime rules. And this is a clear way of being able to show that we're complying with overtime rules.
What is essentially even saying somebody's on salary then?
You can't, I mean, being on salary does not exempt you from the overtime rules. The exemption, if you look at...
You know, to work for my company.
Is for, quote, key employees, is the way it's defined, and so there's a...
That head of that department would be considered key.
She would be borderline, he would not be. So then you run yourself into a situation where he potentially would be making more money than she is, because he would be getting paid overtime when they're out making... They could be on the same runs, working the same exact hours.
But isn't that, isn't that, when a person decides to take that position, isn't that part of the deal? You would think?
I mean, that, I mean, when she took the position, that's what the salary and everything, but I, well, I guess what I'm saying is, whether she's salary or not, when she's making runs outside of her normal, her 40 hours a week, we'll call it, she's entitled to be paid overtime for that, whether she's salary or not, in my opinion.
So she's not a key employee?
In my opinion, she's borderline. I mean, if you wanted to make an argument, you could probably make an argument either way. She does manage some people... No, 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 she's entitled to time and a half for over 40, just like, she does, I mean, part of it is, do you have some management responsibilities? But there's, there's more to that. There's about an eight-point test that I don't have memorized, but I haven't looked at, and I'd say it's about four and four, as far as she meets about half of them, doesn't meet about the other half of them.
So it's just according to the federal's wage an hour state?
Yeah, she's getting paid hourly and then gets paid time and a half for over 40.
And if we don't do this, what are we, an hour, if it come in on us?
You could keep her salary, but you'd have to pay her overtime for over 40.
Much as I don't want to keep people in the lobby, I really don't. You're gonna have the same problem with the water sewer superintendent's mind. Now, my job, that, I'm not even throwing that in there, because if that could be a 40-hour, I'd choose to work more than that. But your other salary people, if you're changing one, you're gonna have to change the other, so I think about it before I make this decision.
So we have one more reading to tell if we go on.
That's fine.
Well, and that's where you might want to think about the other salary people before you make a decision.
Right. Okay, does that answer everybody's question?
Put that on the blackboard.
There you go.
And then next is a first reading of ordinance 2015-18, a first reading by caption only, an ordinance amending section 921.03 of the codified ordinances of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio to reduce the minimum sewer charge and declaring an emergency. This is, we passed on another one at the last meeting of this, um, in following through, the changes got made to the residential accounts, uh, but then after the fact, the committee said it was supposed to apply to the non-residential accounts too. So in, uh, actually, this should be a three, I'll make that change, in three, what says effective for bills for the minimum size of the water line, that got changed to $15 as well, and in part C, uh, for those that don't have water meters, the flat rate per month also got changed to $15. And that's basically to make it so it's uniform throughout for residential customers, non-residential customers, and for people that do not have water meters. And the other one...
Will this supersede the one from Monday?
No. Well, if you don't pass this, the one from Monday is still good. The difference is, the one from Monday only addressed the residential accounts.
This will make it fair...
This will make it sort of apply through all the accounts. This is what'll happen.
And this is the third reading?
This is a first reading, but I did it as an emergency, because the other one's set to take effect, and so if you want them to all be treated the same at the same time, you...
I second you.
Okay, is everybody on board there? Ron Jones moves to suspend the rules. Mark Haver seconds, and that is on the addition of ordinance, let me get this correct, 2015-18. Roll call, please.
Well, I only have a Jones, we need two seconds of it.
All right.
But...
Yes.
Beverly?
No.
Hart?
No.
Jones?
Yes.
Thecraskey?
No.
Should I just be a first reading then?
First reading?
Yeah, because that was just to suspend the rules.
All right. So we'll go on? Anything else?
That's all the legislation.
Okay, at this time, we will go into item three, which is discuss downtown parking. We have several guests here with concerns on parking. Let me add that initially, when this parking situation was put together to change, it was for safety concerns, and again, I don't believe we were honestly told the exact number of spots we're gonna lose. It was six to eight. Uh, bound, full voted to, uh, go along with that. Now we're having some concerns, like you are, and I've talked to several people. I made a couple notes today, and we'll let council, this is council's decision, but parking, to me, is like my father used to say, spaces are potential sales for downtown business. And like I said, initially, we thought we'd lose six to eight, we lost 27. Um, with the pushback of 30 degrees, that shows everything different than you lose from the ends, so automatically, they lost eight, um, by setting back 20, 25 feet, we were, again, had mentioned. Um, I have a, I have a letter that really was really neat, you fellows sent me today that, you know, everyone makes mistakes, you know, you want to correct it, you go on, and I think that was intended for this letter, it was taken away. But I think before we, I would like to see this voted on tonight, as council wishes for that, that's what we'll do. It takes a motion and a second to do that, but I thought, you know, when people took time out of your day to come to this meeting, you are business people from downtown Hicksville, and we appreciate you coming, and we thank you. Um, at this time, if someone would like to speak, I will grant them the vote of approval. Anyone have one voice of concern?
Yes.
Is it the consensus, is it the consensus of your group you'd like to see this changed?
Yes. I just feel...
I'd love to hear from your people.
No, there you go.
Not a consensus.
No, I just read the statement.
I just feel as businesses downtown, we deserve parking spots. Um, I know it's gonna cost money to change it. Every mistake that we've made personally, or as a business, or whatever, costs us money, but down the road, how much is it gonna save us? There's over 30 businesses in this town. When I have people from out of town say, "How do you guys keep Hicksville going?", it's because Hicksville's an awesome community, we work together on things, and that's the only way we're gonna keep it going. And people say, "Well, we have parking, the bank's putting in new parking, are we having parking over here?" In my eyes, it's not the people who can walk from those distances that are keeping us going, it's not the 20 and 30-somethings, even the, some of the 40-somethings that are keeping us going, it's the older people in our community, they're the ones that are coming in and leaving their money in our community, and when I, when I look out and I see people doing laps through our town, trying to find parking spaces, because they tell me I have to go through four times to find a spot, that hurts, but when I look out and I see empty spots, that scares me, because I've had numerous people tell me, "I don't come to town unless I absolutely have to." And what that tells me is, if they're not coming to town, they're going somewhere else, and if you go out of town for one thing, you're going out for more than one, and that takes tax dollars out of our town. We just need to work together on this and get it done. You know, we're always trying to build, bring more businesses into town, that's wonderful, but let's take care of the businesses we have, and even if it costs $10,000, if there's over 30 businesses in that town, it's gonna cost us more than $300 to bring in a new business, to start a business, and in addition, it costs that business owner a whole lot more than that to lose that business. So, those are just a few of my points. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak about the concerns of downtown parking?
We need to change that.
Okay?
One reason, Diane, we lost all these spaces, you went along with me, because you remember the last time I was here, how much trouble I had to do to get some extra signs for 15 minute park? Well, they're kind of a joke, you, people say, well, they say they're not gonna enforce them, so you made an ordinance, you made a sign, you put them up, and you don't enforce them, so it's a joke there. I talked to somebody Saturday, because the Hoover had something going on, and I just happened to walk outside at nine o'clock with this van, SUV was parked around the sign for all night, down to Hoover, here she come, and I said, "Did you down to Hoover?" "Yeah, it was good." I said, "Can you read?", and I think I made her mad, because I said, she goes, "Yeah, it says 19:00", and I said, "What time is it?", "It's five minutes to nine, you've got parking on that." So, they're kind of a joke, if you guys don't take care of that, if you're not gonna change the spaces, you need to put some more on up all through town, so everybody...
Okay?
That'll affect your business, Mike, because you've lost probably in front of your store.
You know, I can't get involved, we did lose spots out front from Meg Bys all the way down, just like the bank, just like Little Town Hicksville. Uh, you know, some places on the corner do have the luxury of parking in the back.
Right. But it definitely... We had people knock on our back door trying to get cases, because they think they're trying to push the park, so that's kind of difficult.
Anybody here because they like the changes? Serious question.
Which is gonna cost to change?
Who cares?
Is that, black them out, repaint?
It doesn't work that way.
I went from two viable parking spots to zero, because the two went down to one, and the one is capped from the five to nine, no parking, and a lot of people schedule their tax returns in their evenings, and I work until, you know, very, very late. Um, granted, it's only January, so that's a very important single spot that I have, but I can't use half of my business.
How can you say you only have one spot?
Because it's right outside between...
The only way that you can go to your business is to park directly in front of the door?
No, because Mr., um, this, Mr. Haver, Mr. Dean, uh, sorry, Mr. Dean Yoder parks out front, he doesn't park out back, because they don't have parking out back. Brickyard, brick house people do not have parking out back, so they park out front. Um, I lose all of my parking spots. The other one is a guarded off for van use for handicapped people, so, and I understand the need, but I don't understand how, if people have trouble parking normal here, how do they function in other towns when they're backing out of a parking spot? Hicksville's another town that I know of like this, and somehow, people drive...
With parking like this?
All over.
With this degree of angle?
And they, and they're able to back out of their parking spots. For example, Myers, I mean, is that 30 degrees?
Do you get to park in front of Myers' door?
No.
Do you, can you go to church and park in front of the door?
That's, that's one of the...
Can you go to Fines and park in front of the door?
I don't have a floor room.
No, I mean, I can't have a floor, because I thought that's a...
That's right.
So I, I'm done. Thank you for your time.
That's, we appreciate it. I'm sorry about the interruption.
That wasn't an interruption, that was a statement.
Yes.
We get about 10 complaints, we, we apply it right around four or five times, we like to park down here, because we're in a circle block here, it's just built, I mean, people complain with the angle, it's a blind spot in cars, they can't back, back out, as well as the issue, so I get all kinds of, I'll be tempted. This is the...
And it's down to that.
It's the most complaints that I see. Okay?
Until last week, I had at least a complaint in Allen, and I am not exaggerating.
Were there any complaints before the parking was changed?
No. Not to this degree, I mean, somebody might say...
We've had complaints here for a long time.
Mick, don't interrupt. If you have special events going on in town, it's a joke.
27, I don't know if you...
Well, I voted no, because I didn't think we should lose one. I thought we should find a way to get more, um, so, I've heard enough, I'll make the motion, let's rescind this. I thought that these things went to committee before they came to council. Things of first impression can go to committee, but we've all heard about this, this, I mean, we know what's involved here, the people have spoken... We'll change rules for this particular one. I'm just making a motion to rescind it. You, you can agree, just like you did on the last motion, to vote no. I don't know why it can't be given a chance. Forty percent of the spots in this town? I don't, I don't live in Fort Wayne or Toledo, I live in Hicksville, and I drive up and down this street, and I can park anywhere I want to.
No, sir. But you can walk to where... No, I'm not a business owner, I just came as a citizen. I've lived in Hicksville 20 years, I've got no monetary interest, so I just would like to say as a citizen, that I've been circling the block a lot, and I use the downtown businesses a lot. I go to Two Banks downtown, I get my hair cut downtown, I, um... She's a lovely... I swim of like... I, I, almost all of these people, I don't have to get parked any longer in my end of the block. Really, the last few times I've gone, and we eat downtown at least twice a, a week, my husband and I, and now we park a block, block and a half away. Have you been downtown at lunch hour, or at supper hour?
Oh, yes, I go to Lees's, I don't have a problem.
I don't know when you're eating then. Well, I will tell you this, that part of the reason for that is, as I did state, is because people said they will not come to town unless they absolutely have to. That's what scares me, when I look out my front window, which I look right into the Methodist church downtown, and of course, I've taken out a lot of the spots, but what scares me more than my people not having a place to park, is when I look out and there's no one out there, because that means those people are holding up what they're saying, they are not coming to town.
Okay.
I've had several people tell me that too. We have a lot of older customers that come, and, I mean, I've been in town for four years, and so a lot of those customers are getting pretty old, and they cannot walk from, even from the bank, that's too far for them to walk, and they can't definitely park behind the bank and walk up that hill, there's no way, so... And I think it's a bad thing to say, "We tried it, it didn't work." You know, that doesn't put blame on anyone, does it? To say, "We tried something, and it just didn't work."
Yeah, exactly right. As mayor, I don't see this going to committee, I think we people deserve an answer, and we have a motion on the table here by Mark Haver to change, or to revert, excuse me, revert back to the old way of parking. Do we need a second? I'll second that. Ron Jones, seconds.
Can I say something before it goes into motion? I mean, and I've talked to several people in this room, and several people that are not in this room, and I look at, you know, downtown's a vital, and it's always been busy, and it's a lot more traffic flowing and everything, and I was for, you know, with the committee the first time around for change, um, but a majority of the people, a mass majority of the people I've talked to wanted to go, to revert back to the way it was. Now, I'm hearing we might not be able to revert back completely to the way it was. I have a problem with that. I want to make sure that we gain as many parking spots back as possible if we are going to change, and I know that's not gonna maybe happen, and I, that's why I was wondering if we can even take a look at, you know...
And I've looked at it up and down the street, Kent's looked at it.
But I want to make sure, if we're not, and I'm just gonna throw this out there, if we're only gonna gain 10, that might be an issue, you know what I'm saying?
What?
We, you lost 27, you're gonna...
10's better than what we got now.
You gained, you gained them all back.
That's, that's what I want, to find out why.
You will put it back to state spec, which it is now, it will be the distances from the crosswalks, that won't change, it'll be the distances from handicaps, that won't change. All that is gone in by the state, by their code. What we had before with, that was our layout, that was the Village of Hicksville's layout. What you have up there now is state code.
Minus the angle.
Minus the angle, right.
Minus the angle.
But as you, as you bring that line back from the corner, you'll lose more space. The front spot against the curb will remain the same, you've got those distances, the only place you change is out on the ends, so on each corner, you'll lose more area, because you have to stay 25 feet from that crosswalk, per the state.
So we were legal all this time?
Sure.
So we have to go by the state standard?
You certainly do.
I thought I heard last meeting, we can go our way, no. I heard that somewhere.
So the places like in front of my office that lost a bunch, because of fire hydrant probably, and the bank because of the egresses and...
Correct.
They're not going, like, the bank won't gain their, their two spots back, they won't get four. I lost all parking, I won't buy lines in front of me now in the snowbank, but, so I won't gain mine back.
You, you might gain, probably as, as they come down from like, maybe from, from John's store, on coming down, as it tips back, you might gain one, the bank might pick up one, uh, but you're just, you're not, any place that you see all those lines, it's not gonna change.
I did a little math, and I did a little measuring, and I'm not an engineer, can't do research with Gurkin, um, can't conspice of that, but we're at about 15, I personally think, my looking, even with the setback, it's gonna be somewhere between 15 and 19.
We're in the V back.
Yes.
Still be the code.
Still be the code. You told me 10.
I pass on to you what Gurkin told me, they said figure on maybe 10 to 15. I've been in paving business and striping parking lots the majority of my life, you're gonna be lucky if you pick up 10. It doesn't take a rocket scientist or an engineer to lay out the parking area, I've done it all my life, you might pick up 10.
Well, if you pick up 10, and then you endorse the parking or the business...
Now, now you're getting into a different ballgame, that's a different ballgame.
And you would gain the other 15.
We haven't been able to enforce anything up there so far, so I don't know, you know, why we're gonna do it now.
Well, council, why is that?
Well, that's still definitely a positive thing.
The committee brought a recommendation, and the full council turned it down. Committee wanted to hire somebody to monitor the town, but the full council didn't want to do that.
So we trashed uptown, we don't wanna monitor, so this is what we're starting with. I think, you know, you don't even wanna lay it out and see what it really's gonna end up being.
I'm telling you, Gurkin, Gurkin paving, Gurkin paving, that guy, that guy is so sharp, he can drive through a parking lot and tell you how many parking spaces there's gonna be, and I'll bet you he doesn't miss it.
Well, let's not...
Well, 15 is definitely a positive thing.
Yes.
I believe the motion was made.
We have a motion on the table.
I just wish you'd just discuss the time, I don't see it getting done yet, this winter...
It's too busy.
We have a forum...
We have a rule exception. We have a motion on the table to change the parking degree back to 45. Mark Haver made the motion, Ron Jones, second. Mike, you spoke to what your concerns were, I wanna call a roll call, please.
I'm gonna wait down the names first, just so I can push proper, go to the side. Thecraskey?
No.
Hart?
No.
Haver?
Yes.
Beverly?
No.
Jones?
Yes.
Hart?
No.
Really, bye.
Okay.
Well, the next time you wanna come and get your pickup, you can't find a place to park.
Well, the next time you want to come and get your hit, but you can't find a place to park, then-
Yeah. You tell me where, where you want me to go uptown, and I will drive up there and park within two spaces of it right now.
I would like to make a motion, I would like to make a motion with the committee.
Absolutely.
Send this to committee. And come up with some kind of a resolution that would make everybody happy.
A yes vote would have done that.
I don't think so. Or make you happy.
That would have made here-
Okay, whatever. Well, you're leaving anyhow, and you said you're tired of this town.
I didn't say I was tired of this town, I said I was tired of you.
No, you said you're tired of this town, isn't that what he said, Hart?
All right, Dan. We have a motion here by Mick McCrasky to take this to committee, to research it again, so we can give the good people of Hicksville an answer on what council is going to do about parking downtown.
Please consider each business. It seems like you should be able to, before you do it, know how many bus, how many-
And that's what I would like, absolutely. I would like that. I'm for changing it back. I'm for changing it back, okay?
Yeah.
But I want to do it right. I want to make sure we're going to gain as many spots back as possible before we spend the money. Look, sorry.
I, I just want you to know that I'm here to support my customers. I have off-street parking. This isn't as big a deal to me, but I can see why it is a big deal. And I think it's a travesty if you don't listen to your public. And for the life of me, I don't know why you didn't talk to the public before you made this decision. To get some input from them and get their opinions. That would seem to me to be the right way to go about it. But having said that, I just think that this, this council would be making a huge mistake just to ignore this problem altogether.
Thank you, sir.
I'll second Nick's vote.
There's a motion on the table to take this back to committee. The parking situation in downtown Hicksville, second by Hart. Do we need a motion? Well, I'm making this people feel better, it was already a question on the table. So we'll call, roll call on that.
Beverly? The motion is to take it to committee.
Right, yeah. That's what I asked for.
Jones?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Haver?
I already have enough information, no.
Bart?
Yes.
McCrasky?
Yes. Yes, it'll be a street light. A street light probably.
A street light should be possible. That's Ron Beverly, Mick McCrasky, Mike Bart. And for those of you, if you want to attend a committee meeting, it will be posted.
This is where on the website?
On the board board.
Thank you all for coming.
Thanks for working-
Appreciating your comments. And we will see where this takes us when we have this meeting as far as the committee. That concludes our meeting, motion adjourned?
No, 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 no. No property.
We did it.
Yeah, what, right? I'll just say, what we did, I'm sorry.
Kent? You gonna?
I will give Gurkin-
No. About that street light, do you want that to go to committee?
It's going to go over my head anyway, so hey, my-
Not really, I mean, you don't even have to talk to street light. If you want to put a street light up, you can-
I don't want to.
Okay. There you go. You got the email, you got the email. You guys want to meet on it, or do you want to leave it up to him?
Well, you've got a couple other things to meet about, so.
Look, we hired the administrator to make that decision.
That's what I just said, Mark.
So he listens. It suits me, he said he didn't want to.
And about the, uh, extra park?
Well, that's what I meant, you guys are running up to meet anyway.
I talked to Tony today. Talked to Benner. We'll include them in the process.
No, the street lights. Street lights.
Okay, not decided. Okay.
The street lights according to Kent.
And the same with the speed limit. You guys just need to let me know what you want to do.
All right.
So we're going to adjourn.
Well, right after this meeting, we'll discuss that.
Well, we got a center.
No, no, no. Just wait there, I didn't mean to have it meet.
Yeah, just do it.
What are we having to wait, sunshine, forty-eight or seventy to forty-eight?
Twenty, twenty-four.
Twenty-four, okay.
Those are the easements, yeah, I'm saying. And as far as tolling, you just-
On the contract record.
You just want to give it, give it-
When you guys need to guide the dog, we have to go by state guidelines. What you said happened to-
We can go back to where it was.
I say, I will get, it might need to spend some money, we're going to spend money anyway. I'll get with John tomorrow, Helberg with Gurkin. And going to give us a layout, through code, give us a layout. The only thing that scares me to get too close to crosswalks is if I'm crossing, I don't feel like having somebody backing to me.
That's what-
Go across the crosswalk.
That's what that twenty-five-
I mean, there'll be a happy medium somewhere.
I'm just saying, I'm downtown, Mike's downtown. I, many a time, I walked out on non-busy times of the day and go, "Where are all these cars coming from?" I had no clue. I don't, I'm not part of their businesses, I just see it, you know. Um, I think it's an impact for the community downtown. I hear what they're saying. But I think we need to do something for change. But I just want to make sure we're getting the most bang for our buck to go back to that route. Like, I'm not for digging up the brand-new street. I think it's going to look bad. I think it's going to have an impact on the asphalt. I don't think, I'm not sure if it's a good time to do it right now. Especially when you got salt and snow and ice and rain. It's going to chew it up. But I think it gives us time to make a change and help, help the downtown area. You, you get another business with a high flow of customers, you got a real problem.
The one thing contrary to Larry's comment was, it was in the paper. I mean, we talked about this forever.
We had to, we, we, we didn't know we were going to lose that many spots. I just, when we were done, I walked them. I walked one side, I walked John Hart's side. I counted thirteen spots we locked. And I, and they turned around and went home, and I looked at my wife, and I said, "I hope nobody else goes down there in town, so we could worry about them." Thirteen spots on that side.
Well, and I did this little survey, you're exactly right, there's thirteen.
Yeah.
By your meeting. Well, except for, except for John, those are the same people that have always complained about our parking. When it was forty-five, they complained about it.
They do.
Well, you know, like the letter said, and it's not all. But this gentleman named Richard Maston stated, "The only thing that troubles me greatly, and I think we deserve better from city council," mentions your name, Ron.
Mm-hmm.
Said he would like to see change because it looks very professional the way it is. I don't believe looks should take priority over safety or efficiency. And as, like I stated earlier, I want to say spaces, parking spaces, relate to income for downtown business. So you can-
We have, what we have up there is extremely safe, or the state would have never permitted it. And as far as him thinking that you don't have to look good, uh, just look there and just start throwing lines wherever you want to and see how many people think it's attractive.
I think when-
Looking good is necessary.
I think when we talk six to eight, and then certain people in this room knew that we were going to lose more than six or eight. And you demanded the state just keep on going the way they are. We should have listened to our administrator and Mark Haver. And I called for a motion to adjourn, and we will entertain that.
I'll make the motion.
Mark Haver makes a motion adjourned. Ron Jones seconds. Roll call, please.
Beverly?
Sure.
Haver?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Bart?
Yes.
Hart?
Yep.
McCrasky?
All right, thank you.